Order, I'm gonna lead us in a pledge and Dave's gonna pray for it. Please rise, repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm grateful for this opportunity to gather this evening and discuss the matters of Far West City. We are grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful especially this time of year for the many bountiful blessings that we enjoy. We ask you to help us to keep those in mind that are less fortunate and serve where we can. We ask as we go about our business here tonight that we'll do so in a in a calm and pleasing manner. We do ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, um, first thing on the agenda, uh, public comments. Do we have anybody who would like to comment? About almost anything? Oh, okay. Report from planning commission. Chairman Black. I'm sure this will be short.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as we have not met since you have met, there is no report.
Hey.
That is my report.
Hey, thank you. Hey, business items. Prove a business license up and over garage doors. Do we have the applicant here? Come on up. Share with us what you're doing so that.
We do, um, sells service installation of residential and commercial garage doors.
Okay.
We need a business license, um, to run that business out of our home. But we do not carry any product at the home. And, um, so it's basically just kind of like an office and like a place where things get exchanged. Like overnight, pick up stuff for the night before, go and do the job the next day, things like that.
Hey, does anyone on the council have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, do you have any employees or any, you know, trucks that are going in and out of your, or vans or anything?
So we do have some employees, um, and some trucks, and we send our employees with their trucks. And they go and pick up the product from the warehouses or the sales centers, same as we do. So they don't really ever have to come to our houses to pick up product. Um, sometimes they will, just if it's something that we have for some reason. Um, but there shouldn't be like a lot of back and forth.
That answers my questions.
Okay, any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the business license for up and over garage doors. One second.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion and a second by Katie and Janelle. Um, we'll do this roll call. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Hey, unanimous, welcome. You'll get your business license from the office.
Okay, um.
You must have a question, another question. Yes.
Let's, so I get that from the office tonight or during business hours? Email it tomorrow. Okay, so other than that, we're set then? Okay, perfect.
Hey, thank you very much. Okay, next thing, open a public hearing to consider a budget amendment and monthly utility rate. I'll entertain a motion to go into the public hearing.
Make a motion, we open a public hearing to consider the budget amendment for a, and a monthly utility rate increase.
Our motion?
Go ahead.
Second by Katie. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one's gonna be opposed to that because I heard all of you. So we are now in an open, public hearing to consider this. So Cody, come on up and help us understand what we're doing.
We'll need Ryan on part of this too. So there's two parts to this. So Econowaste, you probably seen their letter a while ago and they sent us that letter with their increase. So Ryan's got the expertise on that. We also have another issue, and so that's why we labeled it such on the agenda. Um, Bonavista contacted us with our sewer rates. We did an increase, if you remember, um, with the budget and they contacted us and there's like, there's some kind of weird stuff with your sewer rates with your commercial. And so they sent it to Lindsay and so we got looking at it and it is really inconsistent. I think it's based upon ERUs when stuff was originally set up. But for instance, we were charging like McDonald's 10 ERUs and we're charging Taco Bell one. And so.
You don't have an ERU as.
It's an equivalent residential unit.
Okay.
And so there's really, there's a whole bunch of anomalies. So it's in Dropbox. Do you care if I still announce? So we threw this in the middle of a and I just came up with a proposed rate for that. Well, I guess let's talk about other ones.
Is it a spreadsheet you're gonna open?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Inconsistencies in what?
In the charges between, so let's talk about Econowaste first and then we'll talk about sewer. We'll come back. So these are our current rates. I just threw this together just so you could kind of see what it does. Um, since I'm the accountant, right? So here's our current rate. So first garbage cans nine oh five currently additional garbage cans are eight seventy-two, recycling cans are five oh seven. Per Econowaste, they're asking for an amount equal to the CPI increase that they calculated. And so it works out to thirty-three cents per can based upon their calculations. They also want a dollar fuel surcharge per can for garbage and fifty cents for recycling. My guess there, why it's less on recycling is usually recycling materials are lighter, right? So they're probably saying, wow, garbage is heavier. So it works out that it's a dollar thirty-three increase. So on our diff.
Fuel surcharge increase is just paid when they get their can. It's not like monthly or annually.
It was just monthly. So we would pay it monthly to Econowaste. So it's another increase on their contract.
So I have two cans. I'd be paying two.
Dollars.
Okay.
So your rate, so you can see it's about a fifteen, well, fourteen point seven to sixteen point three percent increase depending on what service it's on. So like your charges right now are nine oh five and eight seventy-two. They'd go up to ten thirty-eight and ten oh five. So your increase would be like two dollars and sixty-six cents on that. And then if you have one recycling can, it'd be eighty-three cents. So in total, these are the amount based upon Econowaste October bill. We have about twenty-two hundred first cans. We have a thousand either second, third, fourth, fifth, however many cans they have. And then recycling, we have twenty-one hundred. So in total, there would be the increases. So it's six grand. For October, we paid Econowaste excluding city dumpsters, twenty-one thousand, six twenty-three. So it's a twenty-eight percent increase. So it is quite expensive for what they're asking for. Now, I'll turn the time over to Ryan, I guess, if he can talk about the contract ins and outs.
Yeah, the agreement that we had with them allowed them to request an automatic increase. Up to, I believe it was a five percent increase in the CPI. This increase that they're asking for, I believe, is more like an eight percent increase. So because this is not an automatic increase, uh, the contract provides for the possibility of renegotiating anything in the contract that needs to be renegotiated. So the, the options to the council now are, are the, the spectrum is to approve the thirty-three cent increase. It's, it's probably not difficult to see where that increase is. You know, probably in the ballpark of the increase of the cost of just about everything else. Uh, or we take an opportunity to sit down with them and you know, have them explain and or justify some of these increases. Uh, maybe tweak some other things in the contract. I think, as I mentioned last meeting. We, we probably should have originally structured the contract so that these increased requests come in July and not in December. But that's, that's kind of a minor detail, but that would, that would be helpful. I, I will be honest, I did the dollar fuel surcharge? Was that in the letter that they originally sent in October? Okay, my bad. I thought what you sent out was the original letter. That's what happens when you don't read the entire thing. So that is, uh, that, that's a big difference. That's a, that's a significant difference. I, I can see one or the other, but I don't understand the need for both. And maybe they need to explain that. But anyway, that's, as far as the contract goes, their, their request exceeds the automatic five percent. So we have some options and we can ask for some additional information. Explanation, justification, however you want to phrase that from them, or as I indicated, you can recognize that this, this may be appropriate and, and go ahead and approve that. But I'm, I'm the, the new dollar increase, it just gives me pause. That was not originally what they had asked for.
And was that something a term that was, I guess, I mean, I guess they can ask for it since we're renegotiating the contract at this point, but.
Could be.
Or is that set up that that's separate from the increase so it could be taken off? I mean, no, no one ever takes things off, but as a surcharge, could it be taken off in the future?
In the letter, it just says, I'm sorry, I'm like the boringness reader there is, but it just says, also, we'd like to ask for fuel surcharge, fuel surcharge for each trash and recycling can as fuel rates have gone from two dollars and fourteen cents per gallon since October twenty twenty-one to, uh, versus November twenty twenty-two to five dollars and seventy-five cents per gallon. And they don't say.
Well, and I understand.
Do away with it or anything.
We, we do have a representative here from Econowaste, so that can also help with the information before we, um, actually open it up for the public to, uh, give their input on this. So if you guys, you, have you guys got what you want so far, the information for us and then should we let him?
That's great. My only concern would be with Ryan's, like just looking at the contract really fast. I don't see where it specifies anything about surcharges. So I'd be concerned, what are we doing next year? Fuel rates are back where they were. Are we just stuck paying a buck forever?
Okay, so.
Thanks, Cody. Thanks, Ryan.
Come on up. Let's, let's have a full conversation about this, huh?
Oh, I understand all your concerns. The fuel's kind of a necessity. To give you an example, I'll try to make crisp. We're not here all night. Couple of years ago, fuel average was two dollars and fifty-five cents a gallon. I thought that when it jumped to three to three fifty, they would come back down. Now we are, you know, two, two and a half years later, now it's five seventy-five. They dropped back down to, you know, five sixty-nine. So basically, it's more than doubled in the last couple of years. That's, that's the fact. Everybody can see that. The, uh, contract says if it's above five percent, I gotta come in and talk to the city about it. In the last two years, it's actually gone up about sixteen percent, but the last year it's gone up eight point two. That's why we asked for the thirty-three cents. I would not have a problem if the fuel brought, dropped back down to four seventy-five to knock it off fifty cents for the one can and twenty-five cents on the other one. It's all about the cost of the fuel. Uh, when we originally did this, we went straight across the board and said, well, hey, look, but in reality, there's no way I would ever guess it would break records for this. There's no way I'd ever guessed that it, the interest rate and everything would shoot through the roof. The CPI or whatever they call it, would, would go more up. Here, here's kind of where am I, the way I see it, the most recent, but to kind of give an example, like an automated barrel two, three years ago was fifty, sixty bucks. Now they're a hundred and forty-five plus a delivery fee. So if I deliver a new can of, to a house for recycling, it costs me two dollars and fifty cents. You're paying me four dollars now. That means I get a dollar fifty a month to haul the recycling and, and do it that way. You know, it's not even seventy cents. It's sixty-nine cents a week because there's fifty-two weeks in a year. For sixty-nine cents, I'd have to dump a hundred houses to get sixty-nine dollars. And to hump, to, to hump down the road and get a hundred homes in an hour to make sixty-nine dollars is almost impossible. The driver's averages are about thirty-two dollars an hour now. Truck cost, everything else has just gone astronomical. Uh, the next thing is, is like trucks, I'm kind of worried about the future because I've had a trucks on order for over two years. They won't even take the order. They tell me I won't even get a truck next year either. So that means the used trucks have gone through the roof price-wise and the new ones, for example, two years ago were less than three hundred thousand. They're gonna be well over four hundred thousand now to replace a truck. So I'm just trying to build in what I need to build in to replace the trucks and the equipment. For an example, the CPI went up, say, eight percent. Well, here, here's another aspect for it. I, last January, I bought a boatload of tires. They wouldn't sell me more than they had. I bought everything they had, like eighty, a hundred twenty tires. Stair tires like six hundred bucks. It's eight hundred dollars for the same tire now and it hasn't even been a year later. The rear tires on the trucks did the same. So all of my costs are going up astronomical. And it does not, and I don't think, nobody could have predicted this was gonna happen all in the last year. I'm not saying that it won't come back down because if it, the fuel does, I have no problem dropping the fuel back down. If it, if it drops off a dollar, I have, or you know, a dollar per gallon, I have no problem taking part of the, the increase back off. But then again, if it jumps up to six fifty or seven bucks, then I would expect to get fifty cents more or whatever it is if it jumps up that high. I guess I hope you understand that I can't absorb a fifty percent or, well, it's over a hundred percent in the last three years increase in fuel. I thought that when it went up a year or so ago, it was gonna come back down and nothing's came back down. In fact, it's getting harder and harder to get, you know, I'm not trying to cry the blues here, but you can't get parts, you can't get trucks. And I'm not just making that up. Uh, other cities that are in the business right now are getting out of it totally because they can't even get equipment to do the job. And that's just, I don't know what it is or why you can't get equipment. It's kind of baffling to me that you can't buy a four hundred thousand dollar truck and I can't even order one. If that makes sense. So I hope that makes sense to you guys. We're definitely not trying to gouge the city. We're just trying to recoup the cost that, that it's gone up. And if you take two, three bucks a gallon and double it and we're not normal, we use fifty, sixty gallons a day in a truck. It's not like we're not using the fuel. We're actually going through a lot of fuel. Uh, some people think, well, it's not really that much because some people even think that the fuel is added into the consumer price index and maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But that's for somebody that drives twenty gallons a week, maybe. We go through fifty, sixty gallons a day. And that's why we're trying to add it up. And I hope you guys understand, I can't pay, you know, a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty bucks for fuel and now pay two fifty, three hundred. You know, no hypothetical, it's kind of the way it is. I can't absorb that kind of cost anymore. And I have no problem if you guys want to go to July, July, because I don't know how you guys do it when you do the budget in the middle. That should just kind of when the contract fell. And I worked with, with the city attorney and the other mayor when we set this up. And at that time, I never even imagined that everything was gonna go and do what it like it has been doing. And I, I think if you guys are ordering anything, you know, new trucks, new pickups, new fire trucks, whatever you guys are trying to buy, you'll, you'll know what I mean. If you can get it, it's gonna be almost fifty, seventy-five percent more. And I just want to be able to keep running new equipment, supplying the city with what they need and going forward. And so that's what I'm asking for tonight. Uh, the biggest question was is if the, the fuel dropped back down, could we drop the price back down? I have no problem with that. I'm just trying to cover the cost that's coming after me. That makes sense.
Thank you, Val. Yeah, so right now we're in the, the public. So now the public gets to feedback and then we can discuss and, and, and go further with it. But thank you for all that information. That helps.
Thank you.
Inform us all.
All right, thanks a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Don't go anywhere because I'm sure we'll have, have more questions for you. So is there anyone in the public that wants to comment on this subject after getting all of that information? Okay.
So we have a second part of the public hearing though.
Oh, that, yes, sorry. We're not, we're not closing the public hearing yet. So, okay, we've done the public hearing on that portion.
Okay, so let me.
Next.
Okay, so I know you're super excited and to be continued. Okay, so here is.
Nothing more exciting than garbage and sewers.
Yeah. Exciting, clean stuff here, right? So, um, okay, so here is the current monthly sewer rates and as best we can tell, it's gotta be based upon ERUs because our old rate was twenty-six dollars. So if you look at most of these, there are multiple of twenty-six somehow. Um, there's a few anomalies and some of these, they were really weird amounts. We just went ahead and changed them to what the residential is now, which is twenty-nine oh seven. But for example, you can see like, let's find McDonald's here. So see, here's McDonald's. So we're charging them, I would guess, ten ERUs. And if you think about it, so like an equivalent residential unit, like how many people go to the bathroom a day, how much water are they using a day? That's kind of what an ERU is set up to be. But then see Taco Bell, it had a weird amount and so we were charging them one ERU. And so you can see that like, there's a huge difference there. So what I did and I knew we were talking about Econowaste, so we just threw this on the agenda so we could talk to you about it. If you want to table it and we want to talk about it more, that's great. We just thought since we're having a public hearing, we'd talk about it tonight and then you guys can decide what you'd like to do. So I just threw together a rate and there's obviously gonna be winners and losers because based upon if their ERU was close to what the water consumption, but how most cities do it is they base their sewer rates on commercial based upon their consumption. And so the more water they have, in theory, like if you think of a McDonald's, they're probably gonna use a lot of water for their soda and their cooking and things. And that's all gonna go down the sewer. And so the more water they use, the higher their sewer usage is gonna be as well. And so I just came up with, I threw together a rate, something that would work. I did a little math. So I came up with a base rate of twenty-nine oh seven. And then that would be for the first ten thousand gallons and then anything over a thousand gallons would be two dollars and fifty cents. And so you can see based upon that, like most of these are pretty close. There's some differences here. I don't know who this Far West Holdings is. But you can see we charge them, I don't know what multiple of twenty-six that is, but, okay. They use a hundred and seventy-four thousand gallons, which is a lot of water. So based upon my just projected rate, we should be charging them more like four hundred and forty dollars a month. And you can see, and I can go through this if you want slowly, but that was my aim. And you can see some places like this Rocky Mountain Medium Duty Truck Parts and Rocky Mountain Truck Parts, which I know is out on nineteen hundred by Smith and Edwards. You can see they really don't use much water and so their rate would just change to what the new residential rate is. And so it'd be a real minimum, minimal increase to them. Now, in checking and looking through these, you know, some of these we know more, like some of these have multiple accounts. And so this usage isn't a hundred percent because on the reports I got. Anyway, some of them aren't a hundred percent. So you can see if it's the same number from above, the, some of these, like Weaver School District, they have multiple accounts. So they have one account associated with sewer and then they got other ones associated with water. So it didn't come through just right. But I would assume those, that's gonna be higher for Weaver. Um, some of them, like this one, this is actually my grandparents. They have a rental and so I believe that's why they're on this list. And so we're charging them for two ERUs, but there are usages next to nothing. And so that would change it to the equivalent of one residential unit, which in ERU and make, talk about this if you have a bunch of questions about ERUs. But it usually takes into account like the yard and everything. So if you have a rental, you know, it's not really a full nother house. We're perhaps overcharging some of these people based upon how our rates were. Anyways, I don't know if you have any questions for me, um, before we have the public hearing.
So what about the outliers, Cody? What would you recommend? Because I see, you know, um, associated food, theirs would decrease drastically.
They're another one that their water is on like five different connections. So if we throw their water on here, it would actually be about the same or a little bit higher. The other problem we have is we have like Dill Chug and Pappy Farms. We have some dairy farmers. So we were charging them for one ERU and, and they would be, will know way more about dairy farms than I do. But, um, I know they, they have cows drinking water, but then they also use a lot of water to like wash down equipment and those kind of things. And so I don't know that it's necessarily fair to charge them the same as like, so we might need like an agricultural classification and maybe we only charge them like fifty cents, uh, you know, like half the water they consume. Um, the other one that's, we'd need to look at is, um, this equity lifestyle properties. I believe this is Westwood Village. And there's state law that dictates that you can't charge a mobile home park more for water than you do a regular house. Being that they didn't want people to say, well, we'll just jack the water rates up for mobile home parks to get rid of them from cities. And so that's a state law. I didn't see anything on sewer. But I would say we may even want to just go upon ERUs for Westwood Village just to be ultra-safe so that it is the exact same. You can see my calculation's pretty close here on that, but it still would be an increase. So that's my only concerns is, do we need, and some of that's up to you guys, do we need a category for some kind of agricultural for some of these farmers that are using water and maybe have livestock that's consuming some of it? So all that's not going in the sewer? And then do we want to do something different for mobile home parks? But I feel like overall for the other, like other than there is some winners and losers based upon the average, like if we go back up here and find, um, McDonald's and Taco Bell, you can see McDonald's obviously is busier and uses more water than Taco Bell, but that's way more reasonable for what Taco Bell's sewer rate should be than the twenty-nine oh seven. So I don't know that this is perfect, but I think it's way more accurate than what we're billing right now.
Okay, thank you for that information. And I'm gonna once again ask if there's anyone in the public that wants to speak to this since that's what this is, is the public hearing.
It seems like, I'm thinking it sounds, it seems like it's a lot, but let me break it down to eight percent increase I'm asking for is seven cents a week. Seven cents per barrel a week. And if you add the fuel surcharge on recycling, it's a total of eighteen cents a week. And so if you add the fuel and the other for each black barrel, it's thirty cents. So it seems like a lot when you look at the, the huge picture. When you look at it, it's thirty cents a week. It is, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank, thank you for that. No, you're, you're, you're fine. More information, the better informed we are when we make our decisions, so. Okay, anyone?
It was one of the issues related to this. It was actually alluded to. And that is the cost of cans. We are paying, this, the city is paying for the waste.
We sent the black cans.
And you guys pay for the, provide the recycle. But the cost of those is going up faster than we can keep updating.
The fee schedule?
So we, we need to address that because as it stays down or the price now of the schedule is
We're not quite paying for a can.
We've also seen an increase in the cost of the actual cans.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Our fee schedule is just recharging citizens a certain amount of its lower cap cost right now.
Okay, thank you for that. Hey. Since, any public comments? On either item. If not, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing for the budget amendment and monthly utility rate increase.
One second.
Yeah, a motion and a second by Dave and Katie. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. So we're out of the public hearing. We are now at the, um, decision whether to approve the budget adjustment and monthly rate increase. So let's have a conversation out of it. Now we can have a, a more of a conversation.
So I think with the monthly utility rate increase, I, I think that we should table that one for now until we have more time to discuss. And I really like the work Cody's done on it. I just would like more time to evaluate and then kind of figure out like those two questions he had. Do we do something for ag and we do something for mobile home parks that we have the one of? So that's what I think we should do.
I would feel comfortable with, I would feel comfortable with that. I didn't, don't know enough about it and haven't had enough context to dive in, so.
Okay, on the Econowaste portion of it, do we want to consider having a discussion about like the times and just about the whole contract?
Um, I, I feel.
And.
I feel like, I feel like um, the CPI increase was something that was laid out within the contract that both parties agreed to. The cert, fuel surcharge was not. I don't, I mean, I don't mean to be callous, but I feel like that's the cost of doing business and um, and, and speaking in favor of the residents and of the city, like in, in my position, it's my, it's my job to negotiate and um, to do what's best for them. And I don't, I don't think that I'm, I'm not open to the fuel surcharge increase. I can see where the CPI increase fits within our current contract, but not the fuel surcharge.
I don't, I mean, I, everyone knows gas has gone up, so I am sympathetic to that cost of doing business. I would possibly be open to a surcharge as long as there was some wording that says, you know, it's not permanent, it can come off. Because I would, I would hesitate approving a surcharge that just stays on forever. But I also feel like yeah, what's the balance of? yeah, what's the balance of helping you cover costs, watching out for our residents? But as a resident, I would also understand, oh, my garbage is going to cost a little more because gas costs more, everything costs more. So I, that's kind of where I sit on that. I, I'm not completely opposed, just because I understand everything's gone up. But the surcharge, I would think, yeah, could use maybe some tweaking.
Okay, so um, just, just as a point of order, because there's just three council members, everything will have, all votes will have to be unanimous for anything to pass. So um, including a table.
Uh, and I, I agree with a lot of what has been said. The numbers that were quoted for fuel early twenty twenty one, we were still coming out of COVID. Fuel was very cheap, cheaper than it had been back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. I have seen a decrease in fuel ninety cents in the last ten days. I'm, I'm in the fuel business. I have seen that shift. So I, I know it is going to move, but I totally agree that we need to address something for fuel. And so I, I think what we do is table that as well, have, take time to discuss through how we can come up with a surcharge schedule so that it's not locked into a year-long contract if fuel just tanks. Because, you know, we could have, what, no one could see what happened to fuel when COVID hit either. And it, it literally just went, it, it just dropped really quickly and stayed there for quite some time. So I don't think it's anything we need to take a lot of time to do, but again, merits more discussion.
What does surcharge schedule address in changing costs in the cans as well?
Um, I don't think, no, I think that has to be separate.
What could we do to kind of, you know, address, address that in our fee schedule? Just keep updating our fee schedule or? Can you just mark it as like at current costs?
Yeah, and that's what I would recommend. I believe how we got it right now is we add twenty five dollars for the admin costs that the city incurs, like with taking the phone call, setting up the can, delivering the can. So I would think that we could just list that whatever the last purchase price was for the city, it was that plus twenty five dollars. And then it would just keep moving. The one thing, I just wanted to add one other thing. Normally, if you remember enterprise funds, we have a profit motive. We want to pass those costs onto the residents. Now, the challenge is going to be with these surcharges. Because do we want to always be adjusting the rates? Or do we want to somehow build part of the surcharge into the rate and then the, the fund itself just eats the rest of it? And so you'll have to think about that too, and what you want that to look like. Because I'd hate to increase all the rates and then like in a year, the surcharge goes down. And then it would have to decide, okay, so are we pulling that out of the rate? Is our rate's actually going to go down? Are we not going to increase the full amount of the surcharge? So you have to think a little bit about that and what you want that to look like with the surcharge. That's the challenge with the surcharges.
That means it's just like a constantly moving target.
Kind of, because, and that would depend on how you negotiate it with them. Because if like every month, depending on what the average fuel price is, if that surcharge is going up and down, we can't really change our, our rate every month either. So somehow you'd have to figure out, do we just want to add like fifty cents of surcharge? And if it's above that, the city eats it. You'd kind of have to decide what you'd like to do there.
I mean, with what you said with, you know, as an enterprise fund, what's best practice there?
It, everybody takes a different approach with those surcharges. And so um, I mean, if you really want to be the most conservative, you'd pass it on and the fund would just make extra money. Now, our garbage fund does have like a surplus that has some profit saved up, if you will. So we could use that to pay part of the surcharge as long as the surcharges aren't going to be around forever. You know, if we
Paying for the extra cost of cans.
Right, right. And so, so it's kind of a balancing act of, of how you want that to look. And if you want that all to pass on to the, to the customers. Because, you know, like, and some of that, I think, comes back to our negotiations with them. Like, do we want to do less with surcharge? But then give them a little more than CPI because that's easier for us to manage. But then we're locked into that long term.
How, what's the terms of the contract? How many years? It's just annually?
No, it's more, it's not.
It's more than that. I think there was an annual adjustment and then isn't it three or five years?
I, I, right off the top of my head, I'm, I'm sorry, but it's, it's more than, it's, it's more than just one year. I, do you remember how long we set that up for? Was it three or five?
Five years. When we did that, the average CPI was one and a half percent for the last fifteen years, so. It only predicts what's going to happen in the future. I can't.
Right.
If my costs go up, if you keep the business, I have to pass on to the, to the city. I can't absorb, you know, that kind of increase. I just can't.
And if you, if you remember, when we did go out to bid, econ waste was quite a bit cheaper than other haulers. And I have experience with other haulers and it isn't unprecedented for them to charge surcharges. But it's usually disclosed in the contract, like a surcharge kicks in at this point and it's this amount and then it decreased. You know, like there's some terms there, so it's real easy for everybody to know what the case is.
Want to have like, if we did a surcharge, we want it to be for a certain amount of time, so it's not doing this, right?
Exactly, exactly. I mean, you can make it so it follows the market, but then who's going to pull like the, the price? You know, like Dave's an expert at that, but are we always going to have Dave on the council, you know, to do that every month? Like, how much do, how like my optically, how small do you want to manage this? Or do you want it to be? Those are things the council needs to consider, I feel like.
I'm hearing that we, we possibly need some more discussion and maybe some more council members to have that discussion with.
Can I just ask one clarifying question on now jumping back to the sewer? What else would you guys like to see? Like, I totally get table on it because it's a new topic. I just want to get the public hearing out of the way and we can talk about it a whole bunch. Is there any more information you guys would like to see?
Spreadsheet's great. We can manipulate that and just run some numbers, crunch some numbers. And then I think it's, to your point, it's about those two questions. And, and then just really see how it affects those outliers.
Right, and if, if we go back, I don't know if that spreadsheet's still open. Um, if you can go to the very bottom, Lindsay. So you can see right now we're generating that fifteen thousand eight oh four fifty six a month on the commercial. So with my proposal, it goes up a little bit to eighteen thousand five forty four thirty eight, which I personally don't think it's a bad thing. Because these are our commercial accounts, for the most part, excluding some people such as my grandma who's on here who has a rental. Most of these are higher users in the city and like their sewer, like a lot of places, the sewer rate associated with commercials higher than with um, residential. Because like if you think of a McDonald's, they should have a grease trap and stuff, but how much contaminants are they putting into the sewer? Rather than like a commer, than a residential user. So I feel like having the rate go up isn't a bad thing for these commercial users and they're still really getting a pretty good deal. I pulled a um, Central Weber's rate and we are higher than them. They only charge like seventy, seventy two cents per thousand gallons. But some of that's based upon how many customers we have and, and things like that. And so um, I feel like we kind of need to be where I've proposed so that we're consistent. And Nate did bring up a point, some of our other rates, like our stormwater is based upon ERUs as well. I don't feel like they're as blatantly bad as the sewer is. But that probably is something we'd want to look at next budget season and see if we're moving away from ERUs. If we want to do something a little bit different with stormwater as well. Um, just so that we, we've got better rates and they're really more accurate, so.
I like what you've done based on usage rather than ERU. That makes more sense to me, but I think just those couple of questions.
Okay.
So back to Econo, could we take, would you mind taking it back at some sort of um, calculation on how we could do a fee?
I can look at it. I can try and pull some other contracts on surcharges. Some of it's going to depend on how, what they're willing to do too and what they feel like they need.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to suggest, I, 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 I think because of all the moving parts, um, I, I think that provision in the original contract that, hey, if we get past a certain thing and things are going crazy, we got to sit down and redo this. But I mean, I, I, I think the fuel is an area that we need some hard figures on your fuel, hard figures on your can costs.
And I don't know that we
So there's about four areas that we can separate out in the contract and maybe look at those separately so that when these fluctuations happen, we don't have to go through this.
And I would say on the can cost, that's more on them, like that's in their contract, right? Like, eh, so we can do something if you want, but most time people aren't like passing that on to the city. So I feel like if they need something in there for the cans, that should be in addition to like the CPI adjustment. We shouldn't have a can surcharge and a fuel surcharge and all this stuff. It's going to go nuts. So I think, personally, what I think we need to do is Econo Waste needs to go back and sharpen their pencil and give us what they can live with. And then we need to sit down and like chew it apart and see if it works for us. And give us a schedule like where their fuel surcharge, like how much they need as it goes up. And, and then we can bring that back to you guys and you can look at it and be like, yeah, I can handle that or no, that's not going to work.
Do we have enough information to make a motion?
I don't even know what the motion is.
I make a motion that we table the uh, budget amendment and the monthly utility increase um, for both commercial water users as, well, sewer, 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 uh, and also the econ waste.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
And I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We have three ayes for a table. All of that for a table. That was kind of fun.
I, well, and that's kind of my question. Can we add some maybe action items to the?
Oh, we, we can put together in, in future um, agendas, all of this conversation, contracts and all that kind of stuff. As of right now, we've tabled the action.
So I think we propose that we do a work session prior to our next, so that we can be prepared to make movement on our next meeting, beginning of the year.
I'll second that.
We're done motioning on that.
Oh, sorry.
But thank you. So that, that one is tabled. Thank you very much for the conversation and all that good information. I think that that's very helpful. Okay, uh, discussion at request for a variance on an accessory building setback for Keith Colvin. Keith here, would you like to come up and share your experience and hopefully you're not scared of us?
No, not yet. But thanks for taking my time, Councilman Mayor. Um, I was, we've been planning on putting up an accessory building off our property. We live on Higley Road, two acres of ground. Down about a half a mile from nineteen hundred. We've been working on it for years. I got a boy that's handicapped. He's in a wheelchair. He's thirty three. He requires complete care. He's in diapers. We have to feed him, but he can't operate electric wheelchair. So everything we get has got to be huge. It's got to be big. So we finally got it arranged. I put an accessory building. We started on it. I didn't realize the law changed the ordinance. So I'm four feet off the property line and I should be technically, because I'm at nineteen feet, so we have to have a tall trailer for him. We should be twenty feet. So I'm asking for a variance and we put it up close to the yard because he likes to come out and help me. If I put a clear back in my pasture off twenty feet, he'd have to go through a ditch and down through the horse crap and everything. So we put it out there so he could, he could come out and help me in the barn and work with me. And everything we do is for him. I'm not going to lie. I've got a big house. I got to have it for him. We, we uh, put asphalt out front for him to get off and on the bus. So I'm asking for a variance. I got a letter from my neighbor. He's glad I put it up. It gives him more shade on his side of the yard. So I've got a note here from him saying he was, he's glad, in fact, he came over and helped me measure to make sure he was good, because he thought it was four feet too, so. No, but I do have a note from him if you'd like to, if you need it. So that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
And it is, like I said, it is nineteen foot six. I thought I had to be under twenty feet, so we, I just, like I said, I went by the old ordinance and I apologize. I didn't come in and get my, things moved a little quicker, so I didn't get my building permit like I should have. Nate's been really good. He stopped and knocked on my door, so he got a permit. I went, oh no. So he stopped me and I stopped work immediately, got him what he needed and, and then I didn't realize I needed the variances, so that's why I'm here to chat with you guys.
So what was the address again?
Thirty one seventy three. It's about a mile up the road from Ryan.
Thirty one seventy three, the
Higley Road, sorry. We have two acres of ground.
You, you can kind of blame your neighbor for bringing in all those docks that made us worried and start looking around. We were worried about what he was building.
I'm not going to lie to you. I went over and told him, I said, look what you're doing. Are you building the city? Get them things out of here.
What are those?
They're barges. He's the only barge company in Utah. He brought them in. He just cut them off the Utah Lake, Alkana, Salt Lake, and he brought them here to wash them. He's getting ready to take them to Utah Lake, so he can dredge Utah Lake, get water in Utah Lake.
All we saw was a crane and some big poles and we're like, what is this?
Yeah. Oh, I used to see how many people stopped by and asked me.
And then, and then somebody looked over and said, oh, look.
When we typically do this, isn't there an application in certain like, like paperwork that, and drawings and stuff that has to go with this for an accessory building?
Yes, it was, and I spaced it off. I didn't get, I, that's why I said Nate stopped by and said, hey, did you get that? And I, I did as soon as he told me that.
So this, this has nothing to do with the bill. He's not here discussing the building itself. The building would go through Nate and the appropriate permitting process. He's merely asking for a variance as he has explained. He called me uh, time of year and so forth. We thought it would be best just to expedite the process. The planning commission would deny this. We have to uh, stay very strictly with the code and law. This body has the opportunity to be a little more flexible. And so that's why he's here and it did not come before us. I recommended to him that he did not. But you're just addressing the variance. The building itself will go through the normal process.
You did?
So where at on the, on your property is the building?
Excuse me, ma'am?
Sorry, where at on your property is the building? I have the map pulled up, so I'm just wondering where.
It's on the north side of my house.
Okay.
Between me and if you look at Steve Gay, it'd be right there on the north side of the, the north side of the house.
On, on the map itself, it's like, I, and I've seen, I drive by there quite often. It's basically at the very back of the driveway.
It's very, it's right back at the back of my driveway, at the corner to where I can get my boy from the sidewalk out of the, out of the place so he could help me work on. He thinks he's helped me work, but it's
We're going to, Google Maps is going to help us here. And according to what we can see on here, it looks like um, it's in the position where you on this map or on, had some trailers or something.
Yeah, yep.
So.
So where?
Scroll up a little bit, the other direction.
Other direction.
Other direction. Yes, so right where Google is right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm right there. So the, it's right there, see, within two trailers, you see a, right there, it'd be from that little trailer back to the ditch. It's about fifty feet long.
And those trailers would be in it.
What's that?
Those trailers would
Yeah, it's a pole barn. The one trailer would be in it and the other one would be for, my boy's got two wheelchairs that we, they're thirty thousand dollars. I need to place this storm right now. They're on the deck and we cover them up, so they'd be back in there too. I got a bed that we have for him that I put back in it. It's the stuff for him to keep covered.
The location is basically next to those trees.
Yes, sir.
And how far along in the process are you?
I've got it. I had the poles all up and I've got it framed. And then when Nate stopped, I quit doing everything immediately. And I just, the only thing I did was get rid of a pile of dirt.
How does the council feel?
I don't know on this one. Challenge with variances is it just opens concerns. I know what the planning commission would do. Ryan, what's, what's your thoughts?
Six feet?
No, he says he's four feet off and he needs to be nineteen. So he's thirteen feet delta. Oh, we're not, it's not the foot per foot of elevation?
That is the foot per.
I thought your building height was nineteen feet.
So my building height's under twenty, so I thought it had to be under twenty.
Okay, so it needs to be ten.
Yeah, and I'm four.
Missing six.
And I got a tall trailer, so I can't fit nothing in fourteen.
He's missing six, yeah, sorry.
I got a tall trailer for my boy and I can't fit that tall of a trailer in a fourteen.
Understand, totally understand your situation. I just.
Is ten our minimum setback for any outbuilding?
No.
Or is just the height?
Four is the minimum.
Because of the height?
Adds the distance. And um, so that, that, that's where we're at right now. If, if we grant the variance, it is, if he, we denied the variance, then it can go to an appeal authority, right, Ryan? Okay, that's, that's the process.
And when did we change that ordinance?
Last, two years ago.
The, the, the reason you changed it was for people on smaller lots wanting to build that. So, I mean, that's something to consider if you have fifteen thousand square foot lots playing in each, two thousand square foot.
Four feet off the property line. So all their snow is coming over on their neighbor. Yeah.
That's from Steve. Yeah, it's, it's right.
Yeah, no, it's the neighbor it actually affects the most.
I guess my only hesitation with that is that that may not always be the neighbor. But, you know, I see where the driveway is on this side, right? The driveway is on his side of the house.
Yeah, his driveway is on his side of the house along with my side. So we're both right there. In fact, he goes, thanks, Keith. I get more shade, shade during the summer, you know?
Can I see your letter for the neighbor? Thank you.
And Ryan, I'm just looking at the appeal language in the code um, that addresses variances specifically. Um, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like, like in, in reading this, it looks like that if it went to an appeal, they, the, the appeal authority would probably be like, it would pass.
You know, I, I can't say how that would go. I think.
Right.
Probably my, I think of just a technical problem we have here is that you usually can't. This was some natural phenomenon. That's, so that, that's the technical issue. I think given you what's happening with the neighbor, I think I wouldn't be surprised if the bill authority say, no, we, we, you know, this is a, the, the equitable solution.
Hey, so it will take all three of you to do whatever it is you're gonna do.
Here's your note back.
Thank you for that. I know. It's always good to have as much information as possible.
What do you think, Janelle or Katie?
I hate to table something else, but I feel like I didn't, I don't, didn't have enough backstory on this to really dive into code and what, and so I don't, I mean, I would vote to abstain just because I don't feel like I have enough information at this point to make a decision.
I mean, it's easy for me to look at the map and say, oh, yeah, that doesn't really affect anybody except for the neighbor who's okay with it. But anytime you do a variance, you know? I mean, it's easy for me to just look like, oh, yeah, common sense. Eh, it's not that big of a deal, but.
City councils have been crazy, I think.
And I, I hate, I hate the idea of having it, having to redo things, cost way more money, you know, that I don't like to make anybody do that if we don't have to, but I don't know. That's.
Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
Until we made the change last year, we have a number of situations where we have those structures. In an exact place that he's got them.
Well, the one issue is that, yeah, he tried to add at one point that the setback was four feet. But that would have been addressed with building permit. And it would have been noted on the site plan where it could be, where it was found this way. Eighty percent finished. It's kind of hard to say. Just move it.
Yeah.
You can't just say, just move it because it's.
So give us a way to make this work that we don't open a situation for the future that causes more heartburn. So.
Can I throw in an idea?
Yes.
Out there?
Absolutely.
Um, the new setbacks on accessory buildings was mostly to uh, for smaller lots and how close they were and how, you know, this is not a small lot. Perhaps if we were to allow this variance, we could ask the planning commission to maybe look at the words of that and maybe keep that growing setback on those smaller lots. That is a thought that we could do.
So how would we word that today, if we want to deal with it today?
Well, we can ju, as a city council, you can go ahead and approve the variance and we don't have to, we can make some additional recommendations.
In the motion or?
Sure.
In, or would that be a separate motion?
It would, it could be in the motion, right, Ryan?
Uh, yeah, but if I understand what, what you're saying, I, um, I don't, I don't think there's an issue with changing the ordinance.
And we don't even have to say that in this motion.
That, that wasn't the problem.
Right.
It's a different problem. So this is kind of a one-off. Really, the, the, the original problem was the building problem. That was. Except that I don't think, I don't know if there was many, yeah, on his part, but if he, if he committed the permit at the beginning, then we wouldn't be here. But uh, so this is kind of an isolated problem. I don't think we can. We have future issues. Um, I think we, like, my advice to the council would just be to look at this isolated incident on its own merits. And anticipating what an appeal authority might do. And I think you can justify that to anybody else that comes and says, hey, what about this?
What, do we have any language in the code that speaks to failure to get a building permit?
You don't, well, I think there is some general language. It's basically a red flag.
Okay.
Which, which is done, yeah.
Okay.
And which he, I mean, and I quit as soon as he knocked on my door. I went, oh, crap. And I stopped immediately. I had some guys out there. I went out and says, you guys need to quit right now. I screwed up. I sent them on their way and it's all I did. Like I said, leveled some dirt so I could get my boy back to, back in and out of there. That's all I did.
And hopefully, Keith, you understand the predicament we're in.
Oh, I, and I really do. I really do. And I, I know, and I, I feel bad that I even have to take your time to do this. I mean, I've been a far west resident for thirty-eight years. Been in that house for thirty-eight years and I've seen it all grow and seen the city just blossom, so.
And I've seen your son getting on the bus too.
I mean, yeah. And everything, I'm not gonna kid, everything we do is for him. Everything, I mean, if I had to put that bill in, I guess I'd have to move it over and take half of my backyard out to get the twenty feet and figure it out.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this variance. With the information that we have, uh, knowing that he stopped work when requested, but that the ordinance changes really for more smaller lots. So since he's almost on two acres here, um, and with the approval of the neighbor. And I, I understand that, you know, a future neighbor might not like it, but that's already a set condition at that point. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve that.
There's a motion.
I'll second that.
And I have, we have a second. Let's roll call, vote this. Dave?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
It's like it worked.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Do you guys need this letter for record or anything?
Yeah, I, let, let's give it to. Thank you very much. Okay, um, next, purchase of a half ton truck and liquidation of a half ton Ford. Nate, as long as you're here, Nate. Come on up. And I appreciate you coming. Okay.
So the, the trucks, right?
Yes, this is trucks.
So we want to liquidate uh, one of our older trucks, um, that has not been on the rotating program with the, with the buyback program. Um, and then we have new trucks coming in. And just like we discussed before about trucks, uh, they've been hard to get, hard to find. Two of the trucks have been, we've had for over a year and a half because the rotation with young Chevrolet hasn't been available. But they're still willing to honor the rotation. But they, they called and said, we have three trucks. Yeah, can you take them? And we, we wanted to jump on it. And so that's why we want to liquidate that truck and.
So we're liquidating one and getting three?
Three, but the two, the two that we're getting, other two is on the rotating.
Okay, so we're just trading.
And uh, then you've had them for a year and a half. Um, so it looks like the state contract price didn't increase a ton, like about six thousand.
It did a little bit, um.
Six thousand?
Yeah. Uh, and these trucks that we're getting, they're all half tons. So Dave has a, a one ton that we'll be rotating through. Um, but uh, it's a sacrifice we have to ta, take with that.
Does, does that hurt us anyway?
No, because we still have other one ton trucks that we can use for towing or or hauling stuff, so.
And this new one we would be getting, it would now go into the buyback program. Okay.
And, and the, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of, the truck that we're, the one that we're selling, liquidating, are gonna be asking actually more than what we paid for it in the first place.
Yeah, we're asking ba, basically the, the low, low book on it. That's what we're asking, which is higher than what we paid for it.
Who drove it?
Josh. It does have, it does have bald tires, uh, but there are twen, there is twenty-five thousand miles on the truck, so.
Budget, we good with budget?
I, I believe so. We haven't uh, even dipped into our budget yet with the fleet.
We should have something in there. I want to budget.
Yeah, um. Yeah, we, we should be just fine with, with budget wise. Uh, um, we, we planned on rotating it. The, the price increases were, were minimal. So we, we should be on mark.
I didn't see the, the lift and tire package on here.
I doubt it, but yeah.
And how are we uh, on the trade-in, um, since we kept these a little bit longer than we were contracted to?
They're gonna, they're gonna keep their promise and just let us trade because it was their fault that they couldn't get it to us.
Perfect.
They, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I make a motion, we approve the purchase of a new half ton truck and liquidate, and the liquidation of half ton Ford.
Three trucks?
Yeah, three new ones.
I think it's three trucks total.
Oh.
I guess that should have been trucks.
Liquidating one, yeah.
Purchase of three new trucks with the liquidation of one truck and rotating out the, through the buyback program of two.
Geez.
I'll second that.
I was gonna say, can I, is that ready to second?
Okay, with motion and second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, new trucks are coming. Now the trucks are already parked out there with a for sale sign.
Yeah, so they said they would deliver the new trucks. Um, we would switch all the hardware over to the new trucks and then they would come back and pick up the other ones, so. Thanks.
We'll have extra trucks for a while?
Uh, for maybe a day.
So I can have a truck for a day? Sorry.
Thank you, Nate, for keeping us on top of that.
Okay, um, and our, our final fun thing to discuss tonight, action, is uh, for our moderate income housing report, we did get the notice of noncompliance. And we have some uh, work to do. So um, we, they found that we have at least two recommendations in the defec, uh, deficiency, and they gave us the corrective actions. And we also need to give them a signed copy of an ordinance update when we do adopt the whole thing, so. Basically, do you guys have any questions on uh, where we need to go forward? We do need to have this by the sixteenth of February. I'd like to, and I did send out an email. Hopefully it arrived out there. The email's been kind of weird lately, but I'd like for us to be voting on this by Groundhog today because that's the council. The only council meeting before the deadline. I don't want to be doing it on the night of submitting the report.
I was hoping that we could kind of discuss and work back from that date and what needed, you know, what steps needed to happen and put those on the calendar because February sixteenth is going to come really fast.
Yeah, February second's gonna come even faster. So that, that gives us fit, uh, January. Well, the rest of December and January.
What does, I mean, is this something that the planning commission and the city council can work on concurrently?
Absolutely.
I mean, that would be my preference because then that would give us.
One of the corrective actions, I think, is a no-brainer because it says, update the general plan to include the exact language from the code for strategies, A, F, E, and U. That's, we do that just by copy and paste. The exact language. The second thing, the city must update the general plan to identify actionable and specific benchmarks and timelines to support the implementation of strategies, A, E, F, and U. It, it is also recommended the goals and strategy sections be more clearly linked to better identify which implementation plan timeline supports which goal. So something along the lines of, so we have a list of strategies, you know, the A, E, F, and I think there was, um, so we have a list of strategies we should have in the actions that this ties to that one specifically. So, and we can do that through our working, so. And then, of course, we'll adopt an ordinance. How do you guys, should we, it's not like we have to, um, our action is to say, yes, we're, we're gonna go forth and, and do this.
Well, I think we should set some uh, work sessions too, to go along with this.
Okay.
So we had already talked about having a work session the first meeting of January.
Should be the fifth. What was that one for?
To do the utility work.
Oh, that's right.
Utility increases.
So, and then planning commission has a meeting in the twelfth, so we could.
And, and just to feed into this conversation, we were going to have a joint work session with the planning commission like next week having to do with um, the, the ranch. Well, they've decided they want to wait till next year, so. I guess we.
We could replace that, is that what you're saying?
We could, if we, we absolutely could. Yes, Ted, come on up and.
I know this has caused a tremendous amount of frustration for everyone that's had to be involved in this. Uh, and I don't know if there's any professionals out there that are offering services on writing these things. I know that uh, larger cities are having city managers and full-time planners working on this. If there are, is the availability of, of a professional to write this, I wonder if we wouldn't be money in time ahead to enlist somebody to write this. I've gone back through our general plan. I've gone back through the law, the intent of a general plan. I think we're spot on. Frankly, general plans are, so what they're requesting is contrary to the purpose of the general plan. General plan is a broad overview of what you want your city to look like in the future. They're ac, asking for very, very specific things. And as the.
Changes the meaning of chapter eight.
Yeah, and as, as the mayor pointed out, we're not the only city that was dinged because, and our verbiage is very, very close to what came out of the law. Uh, that seems nitpicky, not only to me, but to many others. So it may be something that the city wants to consider. Uh, we don't have a full-time city manager. We don't have a full-time planning staff. Uh, I don't know how nitpicky they're gonna get with this. Uh, so as a suggestion, that might be something we want to consider.
I, I also got an email about, they are gonna have some uh, work sessions and about these.
Are they gonna have some training?
I'll say the work session slash training slash, yes, there's gonna be people talking about these.
And that, that's very challenging for the league because they're, as I'm sure you're all aware, uh, very busily working on twenty twenty-three legislation, so. I, this just is odd. I don't know why this has gone the way it has, but uh, something we may want to consider, and we may want to consider waiting till after one of these work sessions to get a better understanding of what they really want. I'm not, I, I usually am happy to dive in and just take care of things, but I am not really sure what they want here, so.
I echo your, um, I think it would be a, a, I think having someone that does this professionally was, is a, a good path forward, but I just don't see, I don't know how we can do it within the timeline and have anything substantial, you know, or, or anything, like I just don't, I don't know how we would get someone on, you know, set out an RFP and then during the holidays and get somebody on. and then during the holidays and get somebody on board to do it in a month.
Right, so I, what, what we can do is we can have a work session and take a really good idea out of it and try to, um, go for it and, you know, I'm sure if we improve on it and have these things tied to specific things and put in the language they want and satisfy what they've said in here to, to, to be. It says to identify actionable and specific benchmarks. They don't say exactly what those actions and benchmarks need to look like. Um, it could be that we're going to have a, uh, one of those, perhaps we're already working on it. Um, you know, as far as like addressing, one of those has to do with things that are close to, uh, like the train type things. We're already doing something in the C three zone and that's an actionable, timelineable thing that we're doing. And we can say, we're doing that. And then when it comes to fifty-five and older, we can say, we're, um, we've actually approved, um, uh, assisted living facility on, you know.
So, I mean, this is one of the things that concerns me because several more items, our timeline was, this is done. And we got no information on what they want. Uh, so fifty-five and older, you can build, although we didn't change the, the size of lots, you can still build a fifty-five and older community in Far West with very small homes that could be made affordable. The challenge you've got is the size of the home doesn't drive the price. The market drives the price. And so, uh, this is, then you get into subsidies if you're gonna control prices and all sorts of things. Uh, I'm just not really sure where they want us to go with this, this is.
A really good document on the workforce services website and it's an outline of a moderate income housing element and it kind of has specific topics that there, and so maybe this is a template that we should follow.
And I don't know, I did not write the report this time. We just need to make sure that it's the right report for the right year.
Right, yeah, the report that, that I submitted in order to meet the deadline, basically it was like, put a link to your general plan and, you know, it, there was no specifics on.
Right, so you may be looking at one of the older ones, Katie, that we've used in the past.
And we do have a contact of Alyssa Gamble that we can speak with and we can meet with her and, um, actually get on her calendar if we want to.
This was updated May twenty twenty-two.
This is just a suggestion on how to modify your, your general plan to fit. So it's just a resource we could use as we move forward.
Seems like it has a lot of good, like, points, like what they want, want to see there.
Okay, so what would you guys like to do? Do you want a, a, a work session early or later?
I'd like, I'd prefer early, so I, I'll make a motion that we, well, I don't know, do I have to make a motion to change the, our, the existing work session?
We definitely can.
I make a motion that we amend the scheduled work session for December eighth to discuss, um.
These strategies and our.
Uh, yeah, the updates to the moderate income housing strategy.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's what we're going to do. We're gonna meet next week and talk more depth with more of us, so that's gonna be fun. Okay, moving on to consent items, approval of minutes dated sep- uh, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion that we approve the minutes from November seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
Hey, I have a motion, Dave.
Second.
Second from Katie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion and approval of bills dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion.
Sorry.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, here's the fun part, council follow-up. Dave, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, the mayor and I met, uh, with the Toll's Development Group last, last week with, uh, also from a representative with Big D. They're looking at some property in Far West for commercial development. And so we, you know, they, they just really wanted to get an idea of what, uh, the city would be looking for, what we would be interested in. So we gave them our best, best judgment on, on what that would look like. And, uh, they're gonna go away and see if that, uh, might work for them. So we've had, I've had some follow-up conversations with them since and some emails and follow-up with the, uh, Big D individual as well. So it's been good, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Katie?
Um, okay, we had parks meeting this week and discussed some, um, ramp grants and, um, other recreation grants that we're going after. Uh, Lyle is working really closely with our, um, counterparts at, uh, the Division of Wildlife to put together a really neat grant, which I'm so excited about. It's an ADA ramp at the Smith Family Park over the pond so that people in wheelchairs or with mobility challenges can still enjoy fishing and doing things in the outdoors. So, um, looking at he, our, the DWR is putting together one grant application for that that Lyle's working really closely with them on. And then we're also going to be applying for another grant through the Division of Outdoor Recreation to supplement those fees, the, the, that cost of that, um, ADA ramp for fishing at the, at the Smith Family Pond. Um, and then have a meeting scheduled with UDOT and all of the kind of powers that be, um, to discuss the pedestrian overpass at twenty-seven hundred on Monday at ten AM at, um, the region offices off of the wall there. Um, I sent you the invite, um, and I've invited Miles as well, but if there's, I wasn't sure, should I invite? I know that, um, Boyd had expressed interest in being involved or should I send him?
You, you can definitely reach out to him.
I'll reach out to him on that, so we have that on the books. Um, and then you may have seen the email from the senior center. Uh, we are having the Christmas dinner on the fifteenth and, um, you are all invited. Um, dinner is at five and they'll have entertainment at six and they would love our help, um, serving food. And that, so that's the senior center. And then I had, um, a resident reach out to me this week about, um, they live in my neighborhood, the Bermuda Court area and had expressed some concerns about the sidewalks, residents not shoveling the sidewalks and it being dangerous for people that are pushing, um, like strollers or getting kids to school and wanted me to see if, what we could, could do about that.
Okay.
So, I don't know what to just.
That answer right now?
I guess I don't have to have it right now, no.
Don't go shovel their walk.
Maybe should we, we, can we just put out a reminder on, you know, our social media that, hey, please keep our sidewalks clear? I'm on a corner, I know the pain of clearing the sidewalks, but we do it because.
Did you get a lot of snow over there in the court?
Did you get more than I did?
It's, I think it's kind of, it's a little difficult because most of the sidewalks coming from Bermuda Court to the elementary are north facing. And so they don't melt like south facing ones do. And so, and then, yeah, there's some corner ones and so I don't, yeah, I, we, we have a fair bit of.
They have a responsibility to use their shovels and even clear them.
Yes.
That's the law. Okay, thank you, anything else?
That's me.
Hey, Janelle, your turn.
Um, just a follow-up on my portion of the parks. Um, I'm reaching out to different playground manufacturers to get, um, pricing so that I can apply for the ramp grant, the large grant for over two hundred thousand is what we think it's gonna be. So I can get the budgets together for that and the deadline for that is January thirteenth. So we talked about turning that in before the thirteenth. Um, so I should have all that information, hopefully, well, I'll have to get it before the holidays. So I'll get that in the next week or so and get, um, that ready for our next parks meeting to review and be ready to submit.
And you do have access to Dropbox, right? Okay, in there you will find, um, a folder called ramp. It is out there and it has both the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one ramp grants that we submitted successfully. So there's some examples and, and it'll have data in there like, um, tax IDs and stuff that'll help you.
Perfect.
Get to where you want to go. So.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, is that, is that all?
It's all for me, yes.
All right, so, um, WACOG, I have nothing until January, they decided to take, uh, this month off. The LPC won't be attending that until December twelfth, so, um, that's a couple of days out. Parks and Recreation, we've already talked about all the grant stuff. Um, oh, I'm not gonna go into those. In the rec center, they're playing indoor pickleball, of course, basketball. And, um, we're gonna increase the advertising, uh, advertising, the open times since we're open all day. So we can, I don't think a lot of people really know that it's open, but those that are, um, there are enjoying it and so we're just gonna get the word out a little bit better about that. Working with, um, Mick on that. Um, Tuesday night, we had a, a Trails of Action Transportation, Robert Alexander's, the, I've got him chairing that. He was sharing his waypoint signage that he's created that we're gonna be putting for our, um, park-to-park pathway that we got the outdoor recreation grant for a couple of years ago that we got extended till the end of May. So, um, we're gonna get all of that kind of stuff in place, or at least everything purchased in time so that we don't, uh, lose our, well, we're gonna get our funding, but we better get what we want to ahead of, ahead of that, we gotta spend the money. And then the saddest thing I have to say is that, uh, Ryan, our attorney, has decided to retire. He gave us, and so, um, and we have some options for re- not being able to replace him to, but to try to fill the gap because we're all really sad and he's still smiling too much. We could do an RFP, we have an online application. I've reached out to, uh, uh, mayors and, uh, county folks and the league and all that. So we have several names we can look at, we have somebody to cover the court through, uh, January. And Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, that wasn't that also somebody that we may also consider for, I think that's a name you gave me. Okay, so that, that's what we get to, to do there. And yeah, we have the senior dinners, the lights are on outside. Um, hopefully you guys have all re- replied to, uh, Christmas dinner that we're gonna be having later on for all of those involved with the city. That's gonna be a fun event, we haven't done that for a couple of years. And, um, that's my report unless somebody has some questions for me.
I didn't get the email about Christmas dinner.
Fire in the mail?
In the mail.
Did you, you know, mail, do you have a mailbox?
Yes, it was delivered on paper.
And it's hanging on my fridge, like real old.
Yeah, mine's on my fridge too.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned, thank you.
Gotta have your, your food choices in there.
Thank you all, thank you everybody.
I'll tell you, it's prime ram, salmon or chicken.
That's it.